Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth. Councilmember Wallace.
Present.
Councilmember Soto.
Present.
Mayor Potem Samer.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Roth is not in attendance.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you, may be seated. At this time, we have citizen comments. This is our special, special city council meeting. Closed session, a closed or executive. Is there any citizen comments for closed session? Is there anyone on the phone? We have two items on the closed session, item number six. Conference with labor negotiator, Government Code Section 54957.6. Labor negotiator Christopher Lopez, NRM City Manager, with the Employee Organizations Clerical Bargaining Unit, Police Supervisory Employees Association, Management and Confidential Bargaining Unit, Livingston Police Officer Association and Public Works and Park Unit. Item number seven, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9, Section D. We have one matter. Is there anyone on the phone with citizen comments for closed session item six or seven? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, is there any citizen comments on closed session items in the chamber? Seeing now, at 6:57, we're going to retire to closed session and we'll be right back.
Call the meeting to order.
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 Call the meeting to order. Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
Please announce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular council meeting for October 15, 2024, being 7:15 p.m.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Can we please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please? Can we please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please? Thank you, may be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Wallace.
Present.
Councilmember Soto.
Present.
Mayor Potem Samer.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Roth is not in attendance.
Next, we have a closed session announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reportable action at this time.
Thank you. Counsel, is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing now, we're moving forward. Next, we have the swearing-in ceremony for police chief. Item number one, Major Moran, myself, will administer the oath of office.
Mr. Mayor, before we begin the swearing-in, we have some technical questions on this item.
Okay.
Previously, anytime the city council has voted to approve the contract for the city manager, we did it when you were on the council, August 16th, with Chief Hale. We did it back in '21 with Chief Marco. I'm trying to figure out what changed to where the contract has not come to the council for ratification. Now, I don't know anybody, but we don't get, we don't get involved in who we pick, but the contract does reside with the council. I'd like to know what changed from then to now.
If I can ask one question before, I'm assuming legal can provide input. Was that, Mr. Mayor Potem, was that a question that was...
That was a question...
Hold on, hold on. One, just give me one second. Let me finish my question. Is that, is that a question that you were able to bring to anybody at City Hall or the City Manager's office before tonight's meeting?
No, because apparently, the only time we got found out that we have a chief is when the agenda came out on Friday afternoon. Not proud of that. And I hear, and I had some more questions of how was this contract passed? What benefits were signed? And why didn't the council have the oversight on what the package was? And I'm, I'm con call on, I'm sure that every citizen here can come forward. That has been the practice. As I've been on the council for all, all for 20 years. We have our former mayor and supervisor there, he can attest to it. And there are citizens here, and even former law enforcement officers. They all will tell you that the chief's contract has come to the council for ratification, and then it's been chosen. So why different?
If I can reply real quick without getting into Brown Act violations...
What Brown Act violation? This is a simple question.
No, no. So if you allow me, I can refresh your mind and memory. You were part of a closed session meeting where, where this item was brought to the council. And, but I'm not going to go into details as to disclosing the details on how. There were no questions, there was, and you were part of that, that, just give me one second. I'm being respectful here. And, and so it just seems unfair that you are bringing these questions up now, and you didn't have those questions back then. And, and that also you did not take the time to ask questions prior to this meeting tonight. That is, even though, even in prior, prior. But then again, I will, I will allow Mr. Santos to provide feedback to your question.
But going before Mr. Santos gives that feedback, a lack close session, and all we did was to approve the commencement of the background checks, nothing else. The contract still has, has come. We've done this in the past. Backgrounds are authorized, and then the contract comes to the council for ratification. Now, this, I don't care what we're going to hear. You, Mr. Mayor, and you know that we've done this, you've done it at least twice. You know that's the standard practice. So I don't want to hear any technical thing, but you know, that's how it's supposed to be done. So I'd like to know why it was not done that way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Based on the language of the city's municipal code, the new chief was hired by the city manager after he reviewed the decision to hire the chief and the general terms of the contract in closed session with the city council. Also, the contract for the chief was prepared by the city attorney's office in cooperation with the city HR team and signed by the city manager as the hiring, or lack of a better word, appointing officer of the city. The contract complies with the current legal standards governing employment agreements and is consistent with the terms of the prior city chief of police employment agreements. Lastly, the contract comply, complies with the requirements of the city's salary schedule for the chief of police position. Like all agreements that are executed with the city, whether it's a vendor agreement, employment contract, settlement agreement, all those agreements are public records and are publicly available to any member of the public upon request or submission of a Public Records Act request. Most public entities handle employment agreements with department heads in this manner if you have a city manager form of government. The city attorney's office, two prior agreements that came, the community development director, and I believe another department head amendment recently, were both approved by the city manager without objection and without ratification by the city council. The city attorney's office, as you know, has only been with the city for a year and was not aware of the prior practice of ratifying the city, the police chief's contract by the council. However, if the council looks at the language of the municipal code specifically, if you look at Title I, Chapter 6, it'd be 1-6-3 of the city's municipal code. It says, "The city manager shall be the chief executive of the city government under the direction and control of the city, of the city council. Except as otherwise provided in this chapter, he or she shall have authority over all officers and employees except the city clerk, city treasurer, and city attorney." Chapter 6 point, 6 dash, oh, sorry, 1-6-4 states, "The city council and its members shall deal with administrative services of the city only through the city manager, except for the purpose of inquiry." Section 1-6-5 goes on to state, "The city manager shall be responsible for the efficient administration of all affairs of the city which are under his or her control. In addition to his or her general powers as administrative head and not as a limitation thereon, it shall be his or her duty, and he or she shall have the powers to," subsection B of that, "appoint, dismiss officers and employees." Subsection 1, "Appointment and promote," and, sorry, "appointment and promote, discipline, suspend, or dis..." And, sorry, "appointment and promote, discipline, suspend, or dismiss all officers and employees of the city except the City Clerk, City Attorney, and City Treasurer. No department head shall be appointed or removed until the City Manager shall have first reviewed such appointment or removal with the City Council in executive session. It is pursuant to those sections that the City Manager approved the chief's current agreement." And like I said earlier, if any member of the public or the Council would like to view the agreement, the Police Chief's employment contract, it is available upon request. If you submit a request to Monica or Musio, the City Clerk or the Deputy City Clerk, your request will be processed and you can receive a copy.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you recall, some time ago, you and I were attending a meeting that was canceled with revenue sharing with Mr. Lopez. We met in a coffee bar, and where we had discussed the recruitment process. And the City Manager and you, and we all were aware at the time what the procedure was, going through a professional committee, citizen committee, recommendation to the City Manager, City Manager makes a decision, asks to move forward, and then the contract is brought to the City Council. And you, Mr. Mayor, you know, you can deny now, but if you lie, it'd be no honor for you, that you knew, and administration knows, everybody knows, whatever that says, you know what we've done in the past. We went through this with the 218. Our citizens expect a oversight from the Council. Everything, you know, and we all talk about transparencies. Well, what the city, you know, where does this right here came from? This should have been, come to the Council for ratification, and even I find out that we have a chief who's been working probably when the agenda came out. So where was even a notification to the Council saying, hey, I made this decision? No, we were kept in the dark. Maybe you weren't, but I never got an email, never got a phone call, never got anything. And I don't think, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else. So why weren't even even notified that we have, and how long has it been? Now, Council does not, and I repeat, does not get in who the City Manager selects. It's very clear. City Manager selects who the chief is gonna be, just like with Public Works Director. When we did that, we as a Council approved the contract. We did. This is no different. We don't make the decision who it is, but we approve the contract. This has been the standard practice, and you very well know that. To hide behind what he says, I think is not right. Now, I have no, anything against Mr. Schiff or anybody. I don't even know the gentleman. I'm sure he's a outstanding person. I have nothing to do that. It has nothing to do with that at all. It's the procedure. We had this conversation a while back regarding 218, right? Oh, no, that's not what we normally do. Yeah. This is what the Council was expecting to happen. This is what I was expecting to happen. And it's just not the way it should be happening, and this is plain wrong. If you want to move forward, you have that, but I would like to ask, how many citizens over here know that how we did it in the past for 20 years? Why the deviation? What is the problem? Why not just go through that formality of bringing it? What was the issue here? Why didn't we do this? I don't understand. Why is half the Council or majority of the Council being left out of the loop on these things? Can anybody tell me out there in the public that we didn't do that in the past where the contracts came to the Council? It did. Why change now? And especially when you and our administration knows what the procedure is. We know, because we talked about that. Why this way? Why this way? What is the reason for it? We talked about this before. It is really, really troubling that some of the Council members are not being kept in the loop on these things. We get updates on, hey, somebody spit on the sidewalk, but Council never got notified of the chief? May I ask, how long has the chief been on the payroll? Can I ask how long the chief's been on the payroll? That's a, that's a public question.
Are you asking? Who are you asking?
I'm asking you, because I don't want to direct to anybody else, because if I do, you know what's gonna happen, okay? So how long has the chief been on the payroll?
Am I supposed to know? If, so, can I respond now?
Yes.
So you're accusing me of knowing the whole process, when all I have to do is follow the law. I follow what's on the book, whether or not things were done differently in the past. I'm following what's on the law, what's on the books, what's on City Code. If you have done things differently, and you have gone against what's on the books, then that's on you. But I'm not here to accuse you or anybody else of doing things that were not on the books, okay? So I'm assuming that if you read the agenda, when you get it on Friday, you would have seen that if there was an item that was missing, you could easily call. Why didn't you call? Well, excuse me. Give me one second, please. I allow you to speak, okay? And you're accusing me of different things that, you know, you're hoping that everybody else out there believes what you're saying. And the thing is, people have known you for a long time. Like you said, you've been in this Council for over 22 years. And whether or not people out there, knowing you for 22 years, what you have done or not done, and they still want to keep it quiet, that's on them. But I will not break the law. I will not do anything that is not on the books, okay? You had every right, just like everybody else in this Council, everybody else out there that received the agenda on Friday, to see that if there's something missing, all you had to do is just make a phone call, okay? So do not accuse me, do not accuse me because there's an election going on. Okay, excuse me. Okay. Do not accuse me of things. You know, I do not get more, I did not get an email saying this or that, probably more than any of you did. But if you are so sure, and anybody else out there, they can do a PRA request. Simple, okay? Actually, I encourage people to do a PRA request if any of that is on the record, okay? So just for you to say that I do things in the dark, apparently you don't know me. And if I did things in the dark, there'll be a lot of things that people will know about other people here. But I'm respectful, I'm ethical, and I have honor. So I will not, regardless of what happens, I will not break what City Code. If you're saying that City Code needs to be updated, then it is our job to update it. If there's language that you want to include in there, by all means.
So what would have been the harm if you followed our standard procedure we did for all these years? What had been the big issue?
All you have to do is ask. Make the phone call.
No. Why didn't we do it?
Because I am one person out of the Council. I do not, I do not get...
We as a Council should be outraged that we were kept out of the loop, that this is what we were expecting. We were all expecting a contract to come forward to be ratified. Why wasn't anything told us by the attorney or anybody else in saying, we're gonna deviate from that? That way we have a chance to ask that question earlier, not when it comes on the agenda like this. So why weren't we told of that?
I believe your question has been answered, Gopal. I'd like to welcome the family of our newly chief. Welcome to the City of Livingston. We're taking your time out of your celebration for your family, spouse, father, whomever here's that made it from the family side. Our PD and IC Sheriff out here, and our staff has also come out to witness this event for the City of Livingston. As for what Mayor Protem has been saying, things that have been done in the past were done in the past. Many of us know that those circumstances were done mostly, I want to say in not good faith. And for us to sit up here on the dais and believe that a system can change with new leadership, we have to move forward, knowing that those things can happen. Because whatever happened in the past, who's ever been in our Council, in our administration, such as a City Manager, haven't always been very upstanding. And they know who they are. We can call them out by name, but pretty much our citizens know who's responsible for what. And I'm not holding myself unaccountable for some things, because I have a vote on this dais as well. So welcome to the City of Livingston. If we can proceed, because this whole bantering of who did what, and who's not doing what, and who's not getting their way, because they don't have control over some aspects of our staff or our law enforcement no longer, because we don't do those kinds of things, Gopal. They shouldn't be allowed. We don't get to go to a chief police and ask them for the keys to City Hall. We don't get to go to the chief and ask if we can use vehicles when they don't even belong to you for your personal use. We don't get to do those things. So anyways, things that were done in the past, let's move forward, Livingston. And hopefully, with our chief tonight that'll be sworn in, our team in law enforcement, our whole team in public safety, a new beginning for Livingston without interference from these tactics that are often manipulative, harassing, and just a lot of bullying. So hopefully, we can lead this city with better leadership than what has been occurring in the past. Livingston deserves more.
Mr. Mayor, what would have been the harm if we had the contract come to the city?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to, I'd like to get your permission to say something. I don't want to just start talking like Councilwoman Soto. The biggest concern I have is, when was the contract signed? When did the mayor know? And when did the rest of the Council know? Until I picked this up on Saturday and read it after some people texted me who the new chief of police was, because I had no idea. That's my bottom issue with this. What, when and where were you told, and why wasn't the rest of this Council, from Maria Soto down to me, Jason Roth, the Mayor Protem, when were we notified of this? And I think that should either be in this discussion for either a closed session discussion or out in the public, so every citizen in the city knows how, when, where. Because I wasn't on when, the only thing I knew about this, when I got appointed to the Council, was that we were looking for a new chief of police. I had no idea who. I don't know who was on the City Committee. I didn't know that until somebody texted me this weekend on Sunday and told me they were on it, and they wouldn't say anything else. But that's the three main questions that is a concern to me. It's like, okay, either tell us that, closed session or open.
So I will allow Mr. Lopez to provide some feedback, and then after that, I am going to go ahead and continue with the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So the contract was executed last Monday. The chief has been on board since last Monday. I know that there were a couple Council closed session meetings, Councilmember Wallace, that you missed. This may have been one of the ones where we discussed this appointment in closed session. With that being said, if you would like to crucify someone, please do it. Unfortunately, we've got a lot of people here that are really excited to welcome Chief Schiff here. So if you would like to do that publicly and, you know, crucify me, you're more than welcome to do that. But I would really like to welcome everybody that's here, our police department, law enforcement partners, to really move on with this item, Mayor.
It's not crucifixion.
Thank you. All right. So moving forward...
Mr. Mayor? I want to be excused from the dais. Thank you.
Your excuse. So at this time, at 7:39, I would like to welcome everyone to this special event tonight for this meeting and for this swearing-in ceremony for Chief, and thank everyone for making the time. It's really, you know, it goes a long way for you being here, and I think it's a clear message of how you want this city to continue moving forward. I know that the city has gone through a lot, and I appreciate you all being here. Mr. Lopez?
Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, due to the loss of a quorum, we have to suspend the meeting tonight, because we can't proceed without three members of the five-member City Council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And that there's no quorum, may I still approach the speaker?
Yes, of course. Please, thank you.
First off, I want to thank the City Manager, Mr. Lopez, for appointing me as your new chief. Mr. Lopez didn't have the opportunity this evening to read my biography, which I wrote. I left about three pages off of it, because I thought we might all want to go home tonight. But I want to make the point that I don't think there's any question in anybody's mind that read my biography or that has seen my resume as to my qualifications. But I have no problem discussing them with any individual or any group in any forum to get their buy-in, as to just not me as the chief, but what we're going to do to move the Livingston Police Department forward. And I want to take this opportunity to both thank Mr. Lopez, who's been excellent in dealing with the negotiations and so forth, and my appointment, but particularly recognize the officers that have been outstanding for the last week. It is my professional opinion that you have an outstanding police department, far beyond my expectations of them. And I am not going to improve this police department as my intention to lead it. And we will move together forward, assuming we work out the technical difficulties into the 21st century. And I'm excited at the opportunity to do that. And I also want to thank each of you who stayed. I'm sorry that we don't have a quorum, but I am more than willing to come back. I'm not sure my whole family will be able to come back, but they're very, very understanding and very supportive. They have a lot of years of watching me go through Council meetings, Board of Supervisors meetings, promotions, and I want to thank each and every one of them for coming. Since most of them are carrying guns, I think you'll assume they're police officers and law enforcement, and that would be correct. And I'm very, very proud of each and every one of them. The grandchildren, my daughter, her husband couldn't be here tonight. He's working for the Pismo Beach Police Department, couldn't get the night off. And I want to recognize the police officers that showed up tonight. I'm very proud that they did. I had no expectation that they would, either from other agencies or my own, but I'm impressed that they did, and most of them did it on their free time, which is even more impressive. The other employees that showed up, again, I'm not gonna tear up here now, but I promise you when I go outside, it's very emotional, it's a beautiful thing to see. And I want to draw attention to something that City Manager Lopez said to me, because a number of people asked why a big-city police commander would come here to the City of Livingston. And during the interview process, I said, well... I said, "Well, a big-city department is just a lot of little departments strung together." And that's very true. The camaraderie that you find in a, in a unit in a large police department is more or equal to the camaraderie that you find in a small department. But I am very impressed with what I've seen and how these officers work together. The last week has, has really opened my eyes and my appreciation for the city of Livingston. But I wanna draw attention to something. The converse question that I asked Mr. Lopez is, "Why are you here?" Do you remember your answer?
No, I don't.
Well, that was gonna be a beautiful segue, thank you.
But with that being said, I think we have the same mutual desire to help out communities and really make differences.
Exactly, and the words you gave were, "It's the people I work with." And I didn't really appreciate what you were saying. I didn't really understand until I spent a week going through City Hall and meeting the people in the street and going to the football game the other night. It really is the people. And it is the people that will keep me here. So, once again, thank you for considering me for your chief. Thank you all for showing up. If we do this again, I don't expect anybody to come. It will mean enough to me that you did it this evening. And I stand ready to do whatever it is you require of me to show my worth as police chief. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. As far as I'm concerned, this is just one big staff meeting. Because there is no public business that we're doing. With that being said, and I wanna make sure that I get the blessing from the city attorney, is there anything that prevents us at the dais to go out and mingle with everybody? For me to provide the bio to the public here? Because this is one big staff meeting. Is there anything that prevents me from doing that, city attorney?
No, the only admonishment I would give or caution I would give would be to any city council member is when you're in a setting with your fellow council members, do not discuss pending city matters or, or issues that may come before the council for consideration. But discussing the bio and sharing that information in a public setting wouldn't be a legal prohibition to that.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. With that being said, there is no ratification of an employment agreement. There is no action being requested of the councils. So as far as I'm concerned, we're all in one big staff meeting. So welcome to the staff meeting that we have this evening. With, Mayor?
So, just real quick, I mean, do I have to first officially close or adjourn the meeting?
You can performatively, but effectively, once the quorum left the dais, the meeting immediately ended.
Okay, so hopefully somebody took a note of that time.
Seven forty.
Seven forty. But also then, then after, after you, I, I'd like to say a few things to the staff here and, and the guests and to the people watching. I think it's important.
So Mayor, with that said, this is one big staff meeting, as we pointed out. So if you wanted to do, I think, an introduction and a welcome to the staff that we have here, I think we can probably follow the itinerary that we have laid out here, Mayor.
Okay, well, this was that part of the itinerary. But I do wanna say, you know, thank you for everyone being here. This is actually right now, somebody came in earlier, I'm all, "Is that the chief?" But nobody else was here, so I didn't even know who the chief was until I, we came out of closed session and I saw you sitting there. Then I figured nobody else would sit there unless it was the chief, so welcome. And don't leave yet because we're gonna, we have some cookies here and some coffee. I don't know if anybody needs caffeine. I'm sure some of you guys are gonna be patrolling or somebody else driving far. And then we'll, we'll have some, we'll have plenty of time for pictures. And I think this is important and I do wanna say that I apologize. I'm not going to apologize for, for others, but I wanna apologize myself for, for the expectations not not happening how it's supposed to happen. And, but, you know, I really appreciate you coming up here and saying those few words and, and the main reason why you're here. And we have gone through a lot. And we all have those healing moments. And, and I think this is a big healing moment for, for all of us. And without taking much more time than welcome, and please stay for the cookies, coffee, and anything else. And then I'll allow Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to provide a bio for, for Chief Schiff. But I also wanted to give an overview of how we got to this point. And so I think this will provide some insight, an overview of how we got here. So I really wanna thank everyone for being here tonight to support Chief Schiff. I also wanna thank Chief Schiff's family for supporting him and the Livingston community this evening. It's no doubt that police officers and their respective families make tremendous sacrifices in their service to communities. So thank you. I wanted to provide an overview of how we got to this point so that everyone can gain an understanding of how this process unfolded. And if, and if the people back there could just, I wanna make sure everybody knows. And here's Chief Schiff's background. To begin this recruitment, we utilized a recruiter who developed community-wide surveys and an internal police department survey to identify the items the community and police department personnel desired in a new chief. These items were used to develop a candidate profile. And this process identified the top priority items. These included the following: community engagement, police leadership and experience, ethics, integrity and honesty, and accountability. We then use our recruiter to gather direct feedback from the council with council interviews to further develop and refine a candidate profile. After this profile was created, our recruiter utilized their expertise to refine our marketing efforts. And candidates were identified based on all the data collected on the front side. Candidates from across the country were screened. And then a series of interviews involving police leadership from other jurisdictions, leadership from Cal Fire, and a community panel assembled with residents selected by the city council made up of business leaders, community leaders, parents, and others, others identified directly by the city council. It ended with a thorough background investigation process in which all aspects of the top candidate were reviewed. And as was discussed earlier today, the council then reviewed the top candidate in closed session. I can say that this was a thorough, extensive, and collaborative effort to identify the top candidate. I also wanna thank Lieutenant John Ramirez, who did an excellent job leading the department through this transition. So now to introduce Police Chief Schiff. In 1985, Chief Schiff began his police career by attending the San Francisco Regional Police Academy. He was initially assigned a northern station on midnights. During this time, during his time as an officer, he became a member of the specialist team, SWAT team, and the department dive team. Within several years, he was a field training officer and participated on several crime suppression and narcotic task forces. After being promoted to sergeant, he helped develop one of the first code abatement task forces which targeted public nuisances. Chief Schiff supervised numerous task forces, including implementing and enforcing a newly developed gang injunction designed to defuse gang recruitment and influence in the neighborhoods. Sergeant Schiff retained his responsibilities as code enforcement officer and used his experience to eliminate public nuisances such as long-term narcotic houses. He ended his career as a sergeant by supervising a squad of motorcycle officers called the Hondas. The Hondas targeted high-crime neighborhoods and used their mobility to reduce crime in those areas with outstanding success. As a lieutenant, Chief Schiff served in patrol and traffic before assuming the role of administration for the public safety at the San Francisco Public Airport, SFO. Among his duties were selecting and implementing a new management information system, supervising and re-engineering the police range, redesigning and implementing new federal aviation security procedures at all entrances, and converting over communications to the 900 megahertz system. Chief Schiff transferred back to the city of San Francisco where he became the night commanding officer responsible for all functions of the police department at night. Chief Schiff was awarded the Gold and Silver Medals of Valor, the department's two highest medals, as well as numerous meritorious awards. He lives with his wife on a ranch where they raised eight children, several of which are currently law enforcement, and several married to law enforcement officers. His family continues to grow with six grandchildren that they absolutely adore. Their ranch raises miniature donkeys, and Chief Schiff's wife owns and manages several restaurants. They are excited to join the Livingston community and look forward to participating in the prosperity and excitement of the city and of Chief Schiff's new role. One final comment that I will add, and this is critically important in the police chief role, and that's integrity and that's ethics. And I know in my first interactions with Chief Schiff that he absolutely embodied those. And in his thorough background, it became clearly evident that he clearly lived by those actions. And so with that said, I can't thank Chief Schiff and his family enough for coming to the city of Livingston. I know that he will do incredible things with the incredible men and women of the Livingston Police Department. And I am just overjoyed and completely proud of having Chief Schiff join the Livingston Police Department. I will now ask that the mayor swear in Chief Schiff.
Okay, so if, I'm gonna ask chief to come forward and for the serenin. So you're gonna, I'm sure you've done this plenty of times. Is that on?
I don't know. I think it is now. Remember, I have the tough job, you get to read.
Thank you. See, you already know to raise your right hand.
I, I have done this before, sir.
All right. So you're gonna repeat after me. "I..."
"I."
"Frederick R. Schiff..."
"Frederick R. Schiff."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...and affirm..."
"...and affirm."
"...that I will support and defend..."
"...that I will support and defend..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...against all enemies..."
"...against all enemies."
"...foreign and domestic..."
"...foreign and domestic."
"...that I will, that I will bear through faith..."
"...that I will bear through faith."
"...and an alliance to the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and alliance to the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California."
"...that I will take..."
"...that I will take."
"...this obligation freely..."
"...that I will take this obligation freely."
"...without any mental reservation..."
"...without any mental reservation."
"...or purpose of evasion..."
"...or purpose of evasion."
"...and that I will..."
"...and that I will."
"...well and faithfully..."
"...well and faithfully."
"...discharge the duties..."
"...discharge the duties."
"...upon which I am about to enter."
"...upon which I am about to enter."
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir.
So next, we have no, the, the pinning of the... Maybe you wanna do the bachelor now? Yes, of course, just be careful.
This is the matriarch of our family, Laura.
Thank you for letting him be out here for us. Thank you so much. So at this time, I think it would be a perfect time before we go after cookies again. Pictures, funny, funny. Yes, of course, some remarks.
No, 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 come back here. I, I think I've covered everything. Again, my deepest gratitude for all of you coming, my family, law enforcement, particularly those that, that came off duty on your own time, citizens and staff for the city. I'm very, very impressed and I really appreciate your show of support. And so really all I have left to do is introduce my real boss, my wife Laura, who is the reason that I, as you said, I am allowed to come back to police work. And I'm really, really grateful to her as well. So thank you very all. Thank you all very much.
All right, so let's have some cookies, let's take some pictures. And good night.